Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance. Councilor Boncorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's okay.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend council rules and move old business authorizing the bonding for $586,000 from the MWRA for the Center Business Infrastructure up to the top of the meeting.
Motion is made. Is it seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion on the motion? I believe it is to make sure that we have enough people here to vote. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so that's out of finance?
No, it did not come out of finance. It just came to the council without a recommendation.
Without a recommendation. Okay. We had this on the agenda a couple of weeks ago, but there wasn't enough. We didn't have a quorum to take the vote. So, I will read the motion. You want to read it?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
We moved at the town council issue the following order with respect to the Center Business District Infrastructure Project, that $568,000 is appropriated for the purpose of financing...
Eighty-six.
Five hundred...
Five eighty-six.
$586,000 is appropriated for the purpose of financing construction, reconstruction, or placement of water and/or soil infrastructure associated with the Center Business District Infrastructure Project, including engineering studies and surveys and all of the costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow $586,000 and issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore under Mass General Law, Chapter 44. And the general law is that the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow and/or all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, the authority, and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or financial assistance agreement with the authority, and otherwise to contract with the authority with respect to such loans and for any grants or aid available for the project or for the financing therefore, that the town manager is authorized to accept and expand any grants or aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, which grants and/or aid shall be expended for the project in addition to the amounts appropriated and to be borrowed under this order, and that the town manager is authorized to acquire by purchase eminent domain or otherwise such rights, titles, and easements as may be necessary for such purposes, to abandon such rights, titles, and easements that are no longer required, to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order, lest any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuances of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment or cost approved by this vote in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Motion is made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council.
You can't make the motion?
You can, but I was going to say, this is what you're accusing yourself of, right?
I am. When we take the vote, I'm going to accuse myself of this.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded by Councilor Boncorry. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Councilor Ringman?
Yes.
Councilor Callow?
Yes.
Councilor Christopher?
Abstain.
Councilor Littery?
Abstain.
Councilor Sordo?
Councilor Farino?
Yes.
Councilor Conti?
Yes.
Vice President Boncorry?
Yes.
President Vecchia?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you. I'm also going to, the chair is going to suspend the rules also to go to the town council nomination for vice president. I will open the floor up and nominations.
Council President?
Nick?
I'd like to nominate Heather Engmann to be our vice president for a few reasons. One is on the Center Business District. She has led the way to add in provisions to make sure that we have accountability, efficiency, and the proper return on investment for the town of Winthrop. She's also led the way on advocating, unfortunately unsuccessfully so far, to bring in more employment lawyer help to the town, to help stem the tide of some of the expensive lawsuits that the town has been facing. And also, I think, for the final reason, that it shows that the council is interested in going in a new and different direction. We hear from the town that status quo isn't working. We want to try something else.
Okay, Nick. Heather, yes.
I rise...
Heather had this name as nomination?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Councilor Boncorry?
Yeah, I rise to nominate Councilor James Littery to the office of Vice President. And James has been on this council since its inception. He has held so many different committee chairs that it would be impossible to list all of them, but he's the current finance chairman, and he has been for a couple of terms. He has been the lead on the school building project, on the Miller Field project, on the Ring project. Jim has done exceptional work outside the council as well as on the council, and represented us very well in getting every major project that's been done in the town for the past 12 years.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Boncorry. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close out the nominations, and we'll have a roll call vote.
Heather Ringman?
Heather Ringman.
Councilor Callow?
Jim Littery.
Councilor Christopher?
Littery.
Councilor Littery?
Littery.
Councilor Sordo?
Councilor Farino?
Jim Littery.
Councilor Conti?
Heather Ringman.
Vice President Boncorry?
Jim Littery.
President Vecchia?
Heather Ringman.
Councilor Littery?
Councilor Littery is the new vice president. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Vice President, does this take effect immediately?
I think it's going to stick a little tomorrow morning.
Okay.
I had, Callow could probably give him the oath right now.
You actually think she's got it in her back pocket? All right, so do that tomorrow, and it will take effect at the next meeting. Okay? All right, back to the regular routine on the agenda. Minutes of the February 19, 2019 Town Council meeting have circulated. Do I hear a motion to accept?
Motion.
Wave a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
Run abstention?
Mm-hmm.
The ayes have it. Public comment.
Hi, everyone. Jean Coffey, PC5. Welcome to, Mr. Farino.
Thank you.
Thanks for serving and getting involved in what's going on. Anyway, I just have a couple of questions. I don't take up much time. My first question tonight to all of you is, I just want to know what the status of the table petition is regarding, you know, the changes of the zoning ordinances in the maps. So, I don't know if there's been any progression on that, I guess, on that side for us.
I mean, the motion remains tabled on the petition. It was tabled indefinitely previously, and internally, what we were doing is moving as quickly as possible in terms of the infrastructure project, getting to a bid process, and then in terms of the zoning, we are bringing Form and Place back in to revisit the 2017 master planning document for the Center Business District, and we are looking to confirm a map out of that process, which will be a public process.
Okay. So, the next question I have is, can the developer start demolition and building without zoning maps or answers that we've been asking for, or does she become exempt, or...
The individuals, so, that individual project, they still have to go in front of the Board of Appeals to get zoning variances regardless of it's the previous zoning or the, like, where they fall on the map. They still need a variance for that, so they have to go in front of the zoning board appeals.
So, that's my question. How does someone proceed when we don't know the answers yet?
That's, the Board of Appeals can make that determination. They can grant a variance regardless of what it's set up.
So, then, if they can do that, then why, then my next question is, why did we vote $30,000 to get the answers?
We didn't vote $30,000 to get the answers.
To look at the maps?
No, so Form and Place is not just coming in to just look at the maps. That will be one part of this process. Another part is that I feel like we have a 300-pound paperweight, unfortunately, from the previous report that was done. There's a lot of good work in that report, and what I would like to do is kind of like reinvigorate the community at looking at that report and making sure that some of the conclusions of that report still are represented within the community, and if they're not represented, then we do an addendum to that report saying on, in 2019, with more careful consideration, some of the goals of this previous document were not the right goals.
Some parts are missing.
Exactly. So, it's trying to have some...
A little, yeah.
So, it's, I can't cast dispersionism and things like that. What I'm looking to do is, we have a good document there. There's, I would say it's 85 percent good. We've just got to clean up that 15 percent, and I want that to be a good public process, and that's why Form and Place is...
Okay. I'm just asking. Okay, and then, there's an advertised meeting on Facebook and on your Town Managers Newsletter that appeared, you know, that got emailed to us, and it is advocating and, you know, asking people for Joanna Schwartz to come to an exhibit and walk through and questions tomorrow night at the E.B. Newton School from 6:00 to 8:00. So, I guess we're going to see some new plans, apparently. She's come down the floor, which is still in excess of what the laws on the books are, right? 35 feet, two and a half stories?
She went to site plan review and stuff like that. It's still a project that would still have to go in front of the zoning board.
Right, so I'm just wondering how we support that and, I guess, encourage that. So, I'm asking if proceeding and engaging the community when we don't have clear answers to our questions, or, you know, does she have an answer that she knows something about that we don't?
No.
That's what I'm just saying. Or a promise from Mr. McKenna years ago?
No.
Like, that she can do this?
We had a, we recently had a site plan review meeting about the project. She had an open...
So, site plan is safety people? Just, it's not an open meeting, right, to anyone?
No.
It's just, it's like the fire?
It's, yeah, it's site plan review. It's fire police, DPW.
So, they, they just kind of decide the building is unsafe, right?
They can talk about issues that could be presented with the building. That's the initial site plan meeting.
Okay, but they have nothing to do with the height and the variances and things like that?
No.
No?
So...
Which is, I'm just wondering, like, why someone keeps drawing up expensive plans or pictures or designs when, I mean, these things must cost significant money. Why would you do that when you don't know what you can do?
She already has a fair amount of money invested in the project, and I think she wants to facilitate a project. That's why she's willing to spend this additional money. I think that her, as a developer, she sees the potential outcomes of this, and she's more focused on the outcomes than the immediate cost of getting there.
Okay, so hopefully, we go through the process, and we'll be notified, and we can vote the deals.
This is, she had, she requested this to be an open house type of thing. She already had a meeting recently at Incubate as well. That was an open meeting, so, that's her. She's allowed, as a developer, to have these type of open meetings to try to introduce a project to the community.
Right.
It's not, we're not pushing anything. I'm not, I'm not there or anything like that.
Right, but some of the councils are, or they encourage us to come to it, but I couldn't go to the last meeting I heard that was at Incubate. I had to work, and, you know, people have to work.
I think that's why she's trying to have multiple meetings, is so that as many people as possible get to opportunity to see what she's talking about, the project and stuff like that.
See what she's hoping for.
Yeah.
But doesn't necessarily mean she's going to gab.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I just want to be clear. So, the first question I had is, do you know any time soon, or can you give me kind of a status of when we might be hearing about the table petition?
It was tabled indefinitely. This was discussed previously.
But I think, like, two or three meetings ago, Tommy Riley was, happened to be at the meeting, and he brought it up. And I think at that meeting, we came to an agreement that what we were trying to address by having someone come in and revisit the entire plan was going to answer the questions that were made in the petition. So, we're not specifically just answering that question for the petition. We're answering a multitude of questions that are outstanding in the center. Correct?
Correct.
Let me turn all the questions.
So, there's, yeah, there's a lot of answers that we're still looking for. So, hopefully, that will get on the table soon.
The map is just one part of it.
That's one part of it?
Just one part of it.
Yeah. Okay, so hopefully, I know you said it's tabled indefinitely, Mr. Faison, but...
But that doesn't mean we're not working on it.
Right, that's what I, that's my question.
No. When it's, it's physically tabled because it's just for the sake of, you know, talking about that petition.
So, I guess that's assuming to me. It sounds like tabled means you put it on the shelf or the table, okay?
No. It's tabled as far as a document that was given to the council, but its content is part of what we're looking into with the $30,000, basically. Okay?
Okay.
I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Jim?
Can I just take a follow-up on that, just for my clarification too? So, there was a planning board meeting a few weeks back, and, so, my understanding that you just said the Board of Appeals makes a decision. Now, they had said something about the building commissioner or inspector, I'm not sure, Mr. Witty, I think. He has the authority to deem a property in or out of a specific district until we have a map. Is that, like, he's the deeming officer until...
That's where the authority lies, until we change that.
So, if there was a building in excess, if it was for, and if it was deemed, if it was deemed that the abutis is in a residential zone, then the zoning would be to and out of stories. So, he would deem, or she, in this case, he, would deem if that property is in, until we have the map clarified, he would be the deeming officer. That's correct.
He's the zoning commissioner or officer?
The building commissioner, I think it is, or inspector, I'm not sure of which terminology. One of them is the town person that would be, have the authority to say whether a piece of property is in or out of the Center Business District until the map, my understanding, is cleared in no more blurry lines.
That's correct. Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
President Vecchia, first of all, I'd like to congratulate Richard Farino, who's going to be the new representative for Precinct 1, and I'd just like to tell him that I watched that last meeting, and I think it's imperative that you talk to the people from Precinct 5, because right this time, we have three councils who hush themselves, and what we want is we want trust, and we want transparency going on. We're very concerned that the safeguards as the council is, because you are agents of the public, and you have a role and have the obligation to listen to your constituents, that our safeguards as longtime residents of Winthrop, neighbors and abutis and residents be taken into full consideration. I'm not really interested in the developers. I'm interested in my neighbors and the quality of life we're going to lead. We do not want to be obstructionist, but on the other hand, we don't want to see 50 units in Winthrop Center. When you have a street like Somerset Avenue, where you have nine single-family homes running into 50 units, it just, it makes no sense at all. There's no logic to it, and we're doing the antithesis for what the CBD is. This is the CBD we're talking about, Center Business District. We don't want it to turn into the CRD, Center Residential District, okay? Because we've been coming here now for two years, and I think we have a mutual understanding, and I hope that you have a sympathetic understanding of the people that put you in office, and we're all very concerned about the quality of life that we're going to lead, because this impact is going to be devastating to the entire Precinct 5. And we're hoping that you look at the presentation we've given you, the number of testimonials that have taken place up here. There's been an awful lot that's going on, and somehow, it just seems that it's pitted in some ways, people against each other, and I think Mr. Vecia has done a great job in a tough election. He won by 11 votes, 11 votes, or if you vote counts, and he's been put in a very tough position, as well as the veteran councillors here. And I think we have to really find something that's really reasonable for all the residents. And the last thing I just wanted to finish up with is that we understand that the town needs money, but on the other hand, we can't compromise our distinct character as a town. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Yes, Jack?
Check out Precinct 3. I couldn't hear the managers' words when he spoke about the $30,000 and the firm he's hiring on, $30,000, and what actually the firm is going to be looking into. If you could turn this way and answer that question, I'd appreciate it.
It's Form and Place. They came and did the previous Center Business District Master Plan. We are re-engaging with them because we have heard very clearly that the community does not have a fair amount of trust in the document that was provided by that company at the end and Mass Development and MAPC. So, they are coming back to re-engage with the public on this process and make sure that some of the conclusions that they met in the document are still the conclusions that the community is looking to move towards, and we want to make sure everyone is on board because a master planning document serves no good if it is questioned by the community. It's supposed to be a representation of what the community actually wants for itself. So, that is what we're looking to have that firm do, is come here, help them re-engage in that process, and hopefully lead us to a point that the community has a higher level of trust in the document that is provided.
Okay. You mentioned that they have a previous document submitted to the town?
Yes.
Can we find that somewhere?
It's on the website. It's a 2017, it's on the website. It's a 2017 Center Map, Center Business District Master Plan.
Turned by?
The town did it with Mass Development, Form and Place. It's a big, thick document. It's sitting right on my desk, so I could give you my copy.
I think I have it. And that was done by the Collins Center?
No.
That's a different...
The Collins Center, that UMass Boston, Form and Place.
That's a different one?
Is a firm. They worked with Mass Development and the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission as well.
But they didn't work with that Northeastern Group?
No.
They did, so those are two separate ideas.
Yes.
Okay. And when is this discussion going to take place and where?
We are, the money just got approved in the last meeting, so we can't spend the money until the meeting minutes are actually voted on and approved by this. The vote isn't certified until that point, so now that the vote is certified, we can move forward and actually start working on some of this stuff.
Are they also going to revisit the ordinances that were passed in 2014 that changed the Center Business District's rules?
They, they can look at that as well, again, not trying...
Are they going to?
I'm, we could potentially include that in their scope. That was not necessarily part of...
That's what everybody's wanting to do here, you know, to be inclusive and transparent. I don't see why they wouldn't.
That was voted on, the zoning was voted on in public meeting, correct? The council needs to vote on zoning. So, the council was included in, it was a public process concerning zoning ordinances on the Center Business District.
Yes, I do remember that. I remember it, to use a very good term, very discreetly put in the newspaper on the back pages, when it should have been put on the front pages in two-inch old print, so that everybody would know what was going on with those committees that were making those changes.
Okay, so, not to interrupt, Form and Place is coming to revisit the master plan with us. If you have additional questions, please inquire with my office about it, and we can talk about it.
Jack, will you do that? Jack?
The only question is if...
Jack, please. Okay, I've allowed...
If you're going to visit the 2014 ordinances?
One second, one second.
We will revisit it.
Okay? I have been very lenient during open discussion and public comment by allowing you to ask questions. That's not how it's supposed to be. If you want to make an appointment to visit any official in the town, you can discuss, you can discuss anything you'd like.
Thank you. I did that today.
Okay, but the cross-examination, we got to end it, okay? He's given you as many answers as he can, as he can provide. You keep going on and on.
I don't think that's going to end.
Well, next time, I'll just say comment, no questions, okay?
It pertains to everybody.
Next time, then I will do that. Okay? Thank you. Any other comment? Hearing none? I will suspend the rules for a second because I was going to do an introduction of our new precinct, one counselor. Richard Farino, welcome to the first meeting.
Thank you. It's been an interesting one already. I can't stop. Well, first of all, Mr. President, I want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to say hello to the community and introduce myself. I have been in Winthrop for 57 years. I don't like to announce my age, but that's it, so I've been here all my life. I've been a resident of Precinct 1 for 30 years as a renter and also as a homeowner. I've raised my two children with my wife Rhonda there. Both my sons, Michael and Richard, have attended Winthrop Public Schools. They both went on to college and both have professional careers, and I'm very proud of that, and I'm very proud that our community has participated in that and excelled them to the level of professionalism that they both are. Myself, I attended Winthrop Public Schools till the eighth grade. I went on to Savio Prep. I graduated Savio Prep, went on to get my BA from University of Lowell. I received my master's certificate from University of Massachusetts Lowell, and I got my master's degree there also. I have also been certified by the National Drug Court Institute, and I have that certification. And I also have my Massachusetts Unrestricted Construction Supervisor's license. That's a little bit of my education background and some of the credentials that I hold. As far as my professional career, I have worked six years as a legislative aide for past President Senator Robert Travellini. In that capacity, I worked with constituent service and learned a lot about the legislative process and government, and I'm very proud of that opportunity I had with Senator President Travellini. After that, I went on to work for the Massachusetts Trial Court in two different capacities. For eight years, I was a probation officer, dealt with in East Boston District Court, dealt with a lot of community issues, both Winthrop and East Boston, and got to know a lot about the criminal justice system as we have it, and it was a wonderful experience over in East Boston. I also served, serving currently as an assistant chief. I've been an assistant chief of probation for 15 years, currently up in Salem District Court. I also served in Salem Essex Superior Court as an assistant chief also. In my local town government experience, my first exposure to government was as a town meeting member, which I served until the new present form of government enhanced our government, our king-to-be. I've been on the Historic Commission for almost 30 years, in the capacity of chairman for about 15 years. I've been on the Winthrop Housing Authority. I filled the position of Lloyd Lyons for three years when he stepped down. Let me see where my... I was on the Parkson Recreation Commission for five years, been on the Democratic Town Committee for 30 years. I was on the Dharapul School Study Committee, Capital Improvement Study Committee for 10 years, the E.B. Newton Reuse Study Committee. I chaired the Historic District Study Committee, currently, or was currently on the Memorials Committee, and I also served in the Beach Improvement Committee. Currently, I am on the UMass Advisory Board for Humanities and Science, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Bay State Chapter of the Freedoms Foundation. I'm also a member of the National Eagle Scout Association, the Winthrop Lodge of Elks, the Winthrop Piaa Club, and Phil Twister Miami and Sons of Italy. I'm very familiar with the issues of Winthrop and concerns of Precinct 1, and I promise to fulfill my duties in a professional and thoughtful manner, have the temperament and ability to listen and work with people with an open mind, but most importantly, I have the leadership capacity to make tough decisions. I truly am thankful for the appointment and look forward to helping Winthrop grow and prosper in the future, and I hope you put your trust in me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, the Town Council President Appointments. You all received an email today with your committee assignments. If there's any questions or if there's anything you'd like to change, let me know. If there's any questions or if there's anything you'd like to change, let me know. General information, we have none. The next is a public hearing on a taxi fare increase. Ride Right Transportation, which provides taxi service for Winter, is asking for a rate increase. Regular fare, $4 anywhere in Winter, increased to $2 to $6, and the Winter Seniors, $3 anywhere Winter to Winter, is requesting an additional $2, which brings it to $5. I will let Sean Kuhn, the principal, if you'd like to state your case.
Sean Kuhn, 65 West Street, Winter, owner of Winter Taxi, Ride Right Transportation. We've provided transportation here in Winter since 2011, November. We've been working at the $3, $4 rate since then, and have lost the conference increase since 2011. We've noticed that there's been a decrease in business and an increase in other rideshare businesses in town. Comparing the rates with the other rideshare companies, the other rideshare companies are more expensive than us by $3 to $4 per ride on an average basis at any given time of day. So we asked if the town increased our rates due to the cost of living, cost of business going forward. We haven't had an increase for quite a while. The increase will benefit the drivers, will benefit the better business of Ride Right Transportation going forward.
You want to add?
Yes. The Rules and Ordinance Committee met today at 5:30. We had an open meeting, it was open to the public. It was a public hearing on this increased taxi fare. Sean came before us and gave us all of his indications of why the rate should be raised. We also received all different indications from both Lyft and from Uber as to what the charges have been for certain rides in Winter, and they go everywhere from six, I think the smallest was $6.55, and the largest is over $10 for a ride from a place in Winter to Winter, which would have been Deer Island to the center. But many other of the rides are $8, $8.75, $6.75, so on and so forth, and we have those that are part of the records of the Rules and Ordinance Meeting. In the Rules and Ordinance Meeting, we also received three complaint calls from senior citizens feeling that the rate should not be increased, that they should stay the same because they felt that if they were raised, they wouldn't be able to tip the drivers and as well as that they wouldn't be paying the drivers any more money, we'd just be making Sean richer. After the hearing, we learned that there has been no raises for that longer period of time. He's owned the company since November of 2011 and has had any raise. He currently charges seniors $3 in regular rides inside of Winter, $4. He could be charging 35 cents a person for additional people in the car, and he does not do that. He refuses to charge for an additional rider, even though he could charge for additional His drivers receive 40% of the fare of the ride, and they keep their own tips, whatever the tip may be. So we thoroughly investigated it, and we felt that a motion should be made to allow a change in Mass General Laws 528, and I will be making that under new business. And our feeling was that it should be raised to $5 for seniors and $6 for a regular fare anywhere in Winter, which is still, well, the senior fare would be still $2 below the average Lyft, and the senior fare would be about a buck fifty lower than the average fare for a Lyft or an Uber. So I think he still is giving us a service being cheaper than both those services at the new rates. So I will be making that motion with new business.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anybody wish to be heard in favor of the rate increase? Does anybody wish to be heard opposed to the rate increase?
It's a fair price.
Okay. Counselors? Anybody wish to be heard?
Jim? I think it's extremely important that Winter maintain a taxi service. I just, and I applaud Sean for that, and my only concern is almost, is for the company saying that if the rates are, does $6 mean like anywhere in Winter, even if you were going two blocks? Or is it, is it lower than six, or is it just a flat fee?
It's $6.
Okay. So, and my concern for you, for your company, would be that if there is an Uber for four or five, is somebody going to take that and hurt your business?
So, some of the information I provided to you in those Lyft examples are actually two blocks, from my office at 65 West Street to the Winter Market Place for $7.28. So there are examples, and there are examples at any time of the day, midnight, or at seven in the morning, or twelve in the afternoon, and any given day of the week. So the basic ride, Winter to Winter, in any one of those examples at any given time or any day of the week, is a dollar, is $6.50 plus. I was sitting here earlier in the other meeting, and one of the, one of the, one of the ward members happened to just generally use their Uber app, and I believe the Uber app was at $8.40 just to go Winter to Winter at that particular time, and it was just earlier today. So it is a, it is a bargain for the folks of Winter, and we are trying to keep the rate just below. So the people here in Winter feel that they are getting something for their dollar, and we are keeping it a community-based service, trying to keep the folks in Winter riding in Winter, local town, on a business, business to business.
Just to give you some examples, here is a Lyft drive was four minutes. It was charged with $8.59 for a four-minute ride from Main Street to Winter. There's another one, four minutes, was $7.38. Then we have one that was eight minutes, and it was from Deer Island to Main Street, and they charged $10.98, almost $11. It was craziness.
Okay. Any further discussion? Yes?
A little off topic, but the last meeting, you explained that the services for handicapped individuals, we were able to serve them, but there isn't a car in the, in the town. How would that, so if someone was to call needing those types of accommodations, how would that work?
So wheelchair accessibility, when we first came into town, it's not a requirement for taxi service to have a wheelchair-accessible vehicle per se like the rides. There wasn't a requirement as of Winter Taxis when we came into town. The requirement was us to be able to transport somebody in a wheelchair. So one of the things that we came into Winter Town with was a Transit Connect, which was a small van that could easily, someone could transport out of the wheelchair into the seat of the vehicle, and we could easily put the wheelchair in the back of the van. So we have provided that, and we still do have that, those particular vehicles on the road. For someone in a mobility situation where they have a mobile, you know, a mobile, a mobilized wheelchair. We have wheelchair vans with a pay contract with the East Boston Road Center. We work hand-to-hand with the senior center on a regular basis, and with the Winter School Department. We have handicap vans moving to Winter Town all day long. So if someone needed to set up transportation on a notice, we could easily provide a transportation warrant. So it's not as though we don't have the wheelchair equipment. We certainly do, we have plenty of it. We don't house it in Winter, we don't have parking available for it. Our lot is over in Riviera, my main office is in Riviera. We have 30 vehicles in Riviera, 18 of those vehicles are handicap certified. So we do have the potential to move them. Again, we would work on a, you know, a normal business operation. If you call us, give us a notice, we absolutely would take care of it. So we do have them, and I did give some flyers last time I was here, showing some of the examples that we put in there we do have to offer.
Counsel Cal?
Do you have a flat rate for, from here to the airport?
We do. $14 for airport employees, $16 for residents. Coming out of the airport, $2.25 more due to Massport regulations. So when we go into the airport, we have to go into the limousine taxi pool for a ticket, which costs an additional $2.25. Massport now requires that we are fingerprinted and ID before going into the airport. All limousine and taxi drivers have to be fingerprinted and ID, part of the new 2015 regulation here. So we're undergoing that now as well. That is a cost of $65 per driver to the cost of the transportation business myself. So we have our passing the cost onto the town, we absorb the cost to do that. All the drivers are currently now getting ready to go into Massport to be fingerprinted, Cory checked, Sims checked, to make sure there's been no criminal backlogs with Medicaid, Medicare fraud. So we're doing all this stuff in the background to want these rates. These rates are of need. Massport does require additional insurance systems when you're in and out of the airport now. So Massport is changing the whole airport situation on a broad basis. So we are doing set rates for the airport, like it's $16 for the person who is going in and out, and $14 for the airport carriers.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
A question, I know you do some great work with the Winter Public Schools, and I thank you for that, and they're on an extremely tight budget as it is. Would these impact at all the costs associated with the Winter Public Schools?
No.
Okay. Any further comments, questions? This time I'll close out this public hearing. Next item on the agenda is correspondence, which we have none. Committee reports, finance?
The finance committee met this evening, president with myself, committee members LaConte and Christopher. Also there was town manager Faison, council president Beckia, counsel Farino. There was just one item on the agenda which we will bring up at Old Business. It was a transfer of $6,000 from the Technology Fund to, to fund a website, a website, basically a website refresh for the town. It did come out of committee with positive recommendation, and we will bring that up under Old Business.
Rules and ordinances?
As I said, rules and ordinance met at 5:30 today. Present was myself, his chairman, counselor, Edmond LaConte, and Farino. Sean Kuhn came, he gave us his pitch to raise the rates for his taxi fans. We questioned him extensively, and all of the things you've heard during this process were brought forward, including the handicap issues. A motion was made by Nick to approve the raise, and by, I'm sorry, Counsel LaConte, and it was unanimously passed, and then motions by Council Edmond were made to delete other sections of that fares law, which will be discussed on Old Business. Motion was at 6:00 P.M.
Okay. I understand there was a Miller Field Committee meeting, and we don't have it on the agenda, but if you want to-
We'll just backwardly update. We had a Miller Field meeting last week. As everybody can see, the, the building is up as of now. The roof is protected, it is not shingled yet, it will be shingled once the weather gets a little warmer. They will begin to start work, the vocational school will begin to start work inside doing electrical and plumbing. We might do some contracting of the walls inside just for time constraints. Other than that, everything is under budget slightly, and we still plan on reaching our goal, which is to have full completion by Labor Day.
Very good. Town managers report.
Sure. So, next meeting, we will have the budget presentation. We just recently came into balance. Thank you to Anna Friedman, our CFO, so we're looking good. Now we're just cleaning up the documents and, again, continuing to have hard discussions about the money. My office is currently reviewing the previously, previously issued request for information for the middle school site, so we can better familiarize ourselves with what actually came in and the intent of the original request for information. Again, in a process towards moving us towards an RFP. Internally, we are working with our Treasurers Department to develop a strategy to inventory and surplus the remaining inventory of contents in the old middle school. We got to clean it up as much as possible and get stuff out of there that isn't impacting what we're doing with Parks and Rec and the rank itself before we enter into some of these discussions. We got our letter from the state, from the governor concerning our Chapter 90 funding for our roads and things, which is $277,315. I approached the MIPC for, to begin the process of a master plan document as well as the Winter 2030 type of document as well, or Win 2030. They're going to come and help facilitate some of those programs. The master plan, I think, is going to be a good opportunity for them, and they've been looking to do that with Winter for a decent period of time, so we have an all-town encompassing master plan as well. And lastly, my office will have proposed language concerning food trucks. We've had some inquiries around our office, so we're going to put some stuff on paper and present them to RNO, Rules and Ordinance, for late spring to look into and have the public hearings on and things like that, and then however it shakes out, we can kind of go from there. But we wanted to try to help jumpstart the process and present some language that could be played around with rather than start from scratch. And with that, that's what I have in my report for this week.
Any questions? Counselor?
I've had a couple of correspondents from residents on Mul Road concerning a gas break in the street. I spoke with Dave Rodriguez about it.
That was fixed today.
Oh.
Yes.
Good.
And that, the only delay with that, just so the public understands, is that we have a moratorium I've worked on during the winter by National Grid. Unless it's emergency work, National Grid wouldn't deem that work emergency when they submitted for a permit. They applied for a Level Two instead of a Level One, so we had some internal discussions about that and made the conscious internal decision that we thought this was a one-time scenario where we did think it was actually Level One, and the work needed to be done due to the nature of the odor and on safety and support.
So that had to do with the moratorium that we passed?
Yes. So we have an, we have an internal moratorium that basically don't open up the ground when it's still frozen because we're not going to be able to fix the road correctly. And then in this case, so, and we do have a trigger for it. If it's an emergency, then it triggers it, and we can open up the ground. Because they wouldn't deem it an emergency, we couldn't trigger off a moratorium, so we internally made an exception in this case, and it went through and it got cleaned up.
The neighbors were quite upset because, you know, what happened up in, you know, the North Shore.
Exactly. And National Grid will come back and fix the road once the ground is thawed, so that's probably like in April, early May type of thing, that they'll come refix that part of the road as well, because it won't seal correctly when it's 20 degrees out type of thing.
Any other questions, Jim?
Through the town managers, I just want to thank DPW during the storm, it was a lot of snow in a short period of time. I would ask, and I thank that the, the plan, the parking van was lifted, I would ask possibly with the cold temperatures that we're having, it looks like for the rest of the week, we're not going to see a ton of melting, and I think in some of the business districts and in the center especially, I know going a botlet, I think, you know, the cars are going to be parking on both sides of the street, and it's very hard for emergency equipment to get through, ambulance or such, and I think if at all possible, maybe late, at late one night, they could do a curb-to-curb pickup of the snow, because it's dangerous for the residents, it's troublesome for the businesses.
Understandable. Let me inquire with Steve about what the follow-up will be, because, I mean, the cleanup isn't done, obviously.
Oh, no. And I can imagine it was-
Yeah. The best way for us to handle that, it doesn't damage more equipment or anything like that.
Thank you.
Understood.
Any other questions, comments?
Is the traffic rule going to be delayed one day, or is it going to be on the regular schedule this week?
Regular schedule. Traffic will be this week, it should be regular.
Was it a?
Yeah, it should be regular.
It should be regular.
Who picked up this one?
That's it?
Ah, yes, that is.
The school committee update. This is the February 2015 meeting, which is last Monday. Superintendent is reviewing and evaluating, an evaluation, a complete evaluation of the Athlete Cummings Playground, and has been conferring with the town manager on possible sources of funding to upgrade, repair, or reconstruct the site. As part of this district's strategic plan, the superintendent reported on each one of the schools. The Ford Bank School Smart Plan, which includes student training in areas of diversity and inclusion. The Athlete Cummings School includes diversity, as well as a stop-block block program sponsored by the DA's office. It's all about being safe online and with social media. And the middle high school is conducting a wellness week and programs on bullying. Preschool registration runs from March 1st to the 28th. The committee went into executive session to discuss labor contracts, and for further information, you can contact the school department. Old Business, we already did the motion on the infrastructure project from finance. Transfer $6,000 from Technology Fund to a special article for the general fund titled FY19 Website Upgrades.
Came out of committee with positive recommendation. There is a balance in that account right now, the Technology Fund of roughly just under $60,000, and again, this would be moved from that to a special article just for a website refresh for the town.
Okay. That require a rule call?
No.
Okay. Out of finance without a, doesn't need a second? Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Councillor Boncorry.
Yes. Section five point twenty-eight of our bylaws is the section that covers taxi cabs and liveries. Section twenty-five point two-eight point one-two-zero is the section that covers fees for taxis. Under that section there is section A, which is fears for transportation in the town of Winter. Under that is a subsection one. It's a motion by the Rules and Ordinance Committee that the town council vote to amend section five point two-eight point one-three-zero fears of the Winter bylaws in the following way. Section A subsection one, change the amount for senior citizens by deleting the amount three dollars and adding in place thereof five dollars. And by amending the area for regular fears by deleting the amount of four dollars and adding the amount six dollars.
Motion has been made?
Motion made.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? No discussion?
Have a discussion. Have a discussion. I think it's, again, it's extremely important for us to have a cab company, I think Sean does a great job, I just get very concerned that it, you know, if you look at percentages, it's a fifty percent increase on one and a seventy-three, sixty-eight percent increase on the other. I just get concerned that people will choose alternate methods, and I get concerned for the viability of the cab company. You know, there hasn't been, I don't know if councillor Boncorry said when the last time they-
Two thousand fourteen.
Two thousand fourteen. I just get concerned, I don't get, I don't think he's trying to be greedy or any of that, I just get concerned of the viability of the company, that people might choose other options. That's my only concern. I will, it did come out of committee with positive recommendation, I will support councillor Boncorry's recommendation. I just hope for the best for the company and thank him for providing the service.
Anyone else wish to be heard? If not, we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay. And following up, subsection A also has two other subsections. Subsection two used to say for transportation from Deer Island Gate, it costs two dollars and fifty cents. Now, that bylaw has been in there since we had Fort Dawes, and that's why the reason there was a reduced rate from Deer Island to anywhere in Winter, because it was for the soldiers that were on active duty. So since that is no longer there, our committee has decided that that should be deleted. So the second vote is to amend section A subsection two by deleting the entire subsection.
Okay.
Okay. Then subsection A has another subsection, number three, which read, for each passenger more than one, the additional passenger on the same trip can be charged thirty-five cents for each additional passenger. And after talking with Mr. Clune, he, it has never been his policy to charge more than one fear, no matter how many riders. His policy is that the fear is from point A to point B, and it doesn't matter if you have two riders, he would never charge a husband, wife, and children all a separate fear. So we've decided to make a motion to delete section A subsection three by deleting the entire subsection.
Okay. Motion has been made?
This is for two and three.
For two and three. Came out of committee. Out of committee?
Out of committee.
Any discussion? Hearing done? Who vote on the recommendation of rules and ordinances? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Whole business, discussion of relocating voting polls to the Pauline Street gymnasium. Who would like to go first?
I brought this up-
Carla is here.
Carla is here, and-
Come on up, Carla. How are you?
Good, how are you guys?
Good. You want to start?
I brought this up for discussion a couple of meetings ago, and I thank Carla for doing the legwork and getting back to us tonight, and apologize for keeping her here till eight o'clock. I'm sure she has better things she'd rather be doing. You know, my thought process on this was to try to go back to original polling locations, the middle school, Golden Drive, and the senior center, not that that was original, but to, the main purpose for this, try to eliminate the need for additional no-school days. I've had constituents that have asked me about this, and I feel the same way too, and I look at parking, because the teachers usually do have a professional development day, so they're still on property, and they still require parking spaces. So I think parking is an issue. I know there's been some minor issues with holding signage, it's a little more difficult there than it was at the middle school. My main concern is always the kids, and I just think any days with no school is not a good day, and it will be at least two days next year. And I, again, Carla has a tremendous amount on her plate, and now with the pre-voting and everything else, it makes her job even that much harder. And I know there are concerns with, you know, potential concerns with utilities or wireless internet, or handicap accessibility, and my understanding is that we've had people out, and I'll let Carla talk about that a little bit, but, you know, whatever decision's made is made, I just wanted my thoughts to be in there. It's, again, my real issue is the kids, and if they're, you know, potentially, we could have three days next year with no school because of this, and I just think that that's a disservice. I know in the environment we're in and everything else with Corey being Corey, being in the schools and everything else, you really can't have schools, especially when we're using their cafeteria as a voting location, but I just thought when we have facilities, that we could do this without eliminating school for a couple of days, it should be looked into, and I thank the town for doing that. So I'll let Carla speak.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Oh, you're welcome, happy to be here. I, um, I absolutely understand your concerns. I think that, I mean, I'm not an employee of the school department, so I'm just going off what I've talked to Lisa about, but I think the teachers need to have professional development every year anyway.
They do.
So the students can't be there during that time anyway. I think it's about weighing what's important. Not that I don't think where the teachers park on professional development day, or the children missing two days of school isn't important, that's not my job to worry about, it's your job. My job's only to tell you the safest, best place to hold your elections, so that the elections have, they're flawlessly run, and I don't think one-fifty-one Pauline Street is the place. I don't want to go over the reasons why. I hope everybody's read this, I'm happy to read it to you if you like, but-
No, I think, you know, I wanted to bring it up for discussion.
Yeah.
I respect and acknowledge your comments, and thank you for that, and, you know, this is what we pay you to do, to run the elections, and I-
Yeah, I mean respectfully speaking, I did check in with all those people, I don't want to, I don't think it makes sense to read it all, but if you read my memo, I just feel strongly it's not a good idea. But we'll do it anywhere the council thinks we should.
I'll drop my concern, I just wanted to, you know, obviously, you could have some comments, I'll drop my concern, I just wanted to bring it up, I thought it was worthy of discussion. I have had people ask me about it, and I, you know, I, my first thought is always education and the kids.
You're withdrawing your motion.
I'm withdrawing, well, it wasn't ever, I don't know if it was a motion, it was just for discussion, but-
If it makes you feel at ease-
I respect, I feel comfortable with Carla's-
We really have vetted this, I can't even explain to you how much we've vetted this. In terms of parking on professional development days, when we do have elections, we have like a whole parking plan, we have police go out and put out signs, it's so detailed, it's actually amazing how detailed it is. But like I said, we'll do whatever you think is best.
Building Department was involved in it, you know, the building inspector went down, there was issues with electrical, there was issues with Wi-Fi, there was issues of plumbing, there was issues of handicapped accessibility, which you can get in there, but if it's a snowy day and it's cold out, you know, the building's going to be, you know, it's an old building.
I think it's just a question of who's impacted the least, or what the, you're weighing what's most important. Two days a year, I think elections in the schools is what's best. That's my, that's my thought.
I think Lisa would prefer not to have it there, but she understands, this is the better-
It's for the better good, and I, I'm fine with that, I just wanted to vet it out.
Okay. Any further discussion?
If we still have voting at the high school, how does this even alleviate the problem with-
No, I would suggest that we would keep precinct four at Golden Drive, I would move one, two, and five back to the middle school, and I would put, go to the senior center for the, for three and six.
Oh, so, well-
Yeah, so it would eliminate the high school, and it would eliminate the day, the need to not have schools, but it's a moot issue now, I thank Carla for her work.
I would just say this, while anyone is listening, for those residents who feel that they're negatively impacted by having to go to the high school or the Cummings School to vote, there's early voting, there's absentee voting, there's, if they just call our offices, so many ways that, like, we're in the business of getting people to vote, and we'll make it as easy as possible for people to vote. During early voting, we're open on Fridays, we're open on Saturdays, I mean, we really are here to get people to vote, so if anyone feels that it's difficult to get to the schools, they should call my office, and we will take care of those people.
You had a pretty big turnout with early voting this year.
We did, it's great. Friday voting, night voting, Saturday voting, it's great. So there's definitely opportunity for people to vote, I don't want anyone to feel disenfranchised, we're in the business of getting people to vote.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Is there any problem with the division of elections in the Secretary of State's office by their comments that we should be doing further investigation to that building?
Uh, no, because we're not going to be voting in that building.
Thank you, Carla.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the new business, transfer eighty thousand from the Fund Nine-Sixty-Five Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund to fund eight-ninety-eight old middle school property and utility bills. Do I have a motion to refer to finance?
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to take a minute. The discussion that we're going to have concerning the middle school site, Senate Business District, and the Chapter Seventeen ordinance change have been intertwined since two thousand and fourteen. I think to discuss one without the other would be an injustice to everybody concerned, everybody that's been showing up here for two years. We asked the board to make sure that the two thousand and fourteen ordinance are discussed along with the master plan that we're spending thirty thousand dollars on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
Nixios precinct five. I was driving down to the area that wants to be developed today on Somerset Avenue, and I drive a Honda Accord, I could barely get through that. And as I finally drove through a couple SUVs that were parked, there was a UPS truck behind me that stopped. It could not get through the center. And I have spoken about this, it's also in the neighborhood plan about if a situation ever occurred that took place in Little last year, with high winds, snow, frigid temperatures, how in the world a firefighter is going to get their hoses to the proper dispersal of water? And how anybody can possibly, in a situation like that, the fire department can put on a fire? It is so narrow, there's twenty-six feet down there. I'd like you all, if you get a chance, to really drive right by there tonight on Somerset Avenue, and see how narrow it really is there. And you're thinking now of putting in possibly thirty to fifty more units in a congested area already. I think it has to be really looked at seriously for a possible worst-case scenario. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Hearing done? Let's see, we do have a couple of public relations items. First of all, I'll ask any councillor if they have any comments. No?
Pete? So, a couple of months ago, I wrote up a proposal for a placemaking grant through Mass Development, along with the Chamber of Commerce and the town manager's office. And this idea is that we're going to, while the construction's taking place down at the center, make a couple of areas around the center more appealing to individuals who would go down there and shop, table and chairs, some art walls, things where some of the arts community can get involved with, planters and whatnot in the summertime. The plan really isn't in place right now, but we were approved for a, for the grant. So we have the opportunity right now to, it's a matching grant, so we have to raise twenty thousand dollars through, over the time, and the state would reimburse us, not reimburse us, but add another twenty thousand on top of that. And the idea being that we understand that this is going to be a difficult time for businesses down in the center, but we're going to try to mitigate that through making the center a little bit nicer than it would have otherwise through this. So we have a really nice opportunity through the state, we'll be hearing about it, you'll be hearing more about it in the coming weeks, but we're really trying to showcase the center Business District and what it is that the center has to offer, and hopefully sort of rally around the businesses that have served the, that have served the community so well for many, many years, and a lot of the newer businesses that are down there as well. So I hope everyone keeps theirs open about it, and I hope everyone will support the program.
Councillor, anyone else? Okay, March sixteenth is the fundraiser for the Mike, McDuffie fundraiser, I like Mike. I understand there's, a whole day is going to be all types of hockey going on down at the hockey rink, I don't know how many teams they have, do it up.
Don't know exactly, but there's going to be a-
Four or five teams. And the night is going to end at the Winter Yacht Club with a fundraiser down there with all types of great events going on. March nineteenth is the town council meeting at the Winter High School Auditorium, where we will have the budget presentation. And I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.